New acting mayor.
Yeah.
Thanks, Alderman Novit. Could I ask clerk to call the roll?
Honorable James Cowie absent. Alderman Novit?
Here.
Alderman Waldeck absent. Alderman Moore absent. Alderman Pandeleon?
Here.
Alderman Morse?
Here.
Acting Mayor Schoenheider?
Here.
Alderman Palmer absent. Alderman Edelman?
Here.
Five present, four absent. Mister acting mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Bertie. Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance. Good flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. First item on the agenda, comments by mayor. I just want to mention, if anyone is here this evening expecting to hear about the Woodlands Barra ordinance, that ordinance discussion has been postponed until February 6th. So, we're happy to have you stay for as long as you like. It may not be long, but we were happy to have you stay. But if you're here specifically for that item, it has been postponed. Couple of reasons. Number one is, that is a, obviously, that is a very important issue. And, as you can see tonight, we're very short of bodies. So, we felt very strongly that it were important that we had as many aldermen and the mayor here as well, so we could engage in a good discussion and really have a good in-depth discussion about the ordinance and the issues surrounding it. The other issue is, it gives, quite candidly, all the parties a chance to just fine tune the language a bit, which is, it's a very complicated ordinance, complicated discussion and issue, and obviously, we wanted to have an opportunity to make sure that it was just right. So, again, if you're here for that particular item, we will not address it this evening. However, we will, it will be on the February 6th city council agenda. The next item on, under comments by mayor, a resolution of sympathy for retired public service director Bernard Preis. And I'm going to read this into the record if I may. Whereas Bernard M. Preis was a dedicated and faithful employee of the City of Lake Forest for 28 years from July 23rd, 1956 to January 31st, 1984. Whereas Bernard M. Preis during his employment was hired as a public police patrol officer and held the ranks of police sergeant, lieutenant, chief of police and public safety director. He was a graduate of the FBI National Academy. And whereas, the passing of Bernard M. Preis on Monday, December 26th, 2011, has taken away a highly regarded family member, employee and friend. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city council of the City of Lake Forest, in session on January 17th, 2012, does hereby express its deep regret and sincere sympathy to the members of the family of Bernard M. Preis. Be it further resolved that this resolution be spread upon the minutes of the city council and a copy hereof duly signed by the mayor be presented to the family of Bernard M. Preis. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve and accept.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion approved. Thank you. Next item will be 150th book presentation by Art Miller, archivist and librarian for special collections. Doctor Miller?
Hello, I'm Art Miller. I'm at Lake Forest College, and I also live at 169 Wildwood Road in Lake Forest, and I'm happy to be here to give you some background on the book, the history book that came out recently in December, and some information about how it's different from kinds of histories we've had before. And for people like myself who are non-closure people, it's perfect, because there's an online version and people can be involved way into the future. So, I've got a little PowerPoint here that I'm going to try to go walk you through. The book came out about the middle of December, and the, it's available in local stores. So, I'm just going to try, and it's available by mail also. Several people have it, but I thought I would just try and show you what kind of thing it is and why it's different. This is the cover, obviously, taken a year ago in the Christmas season when the ice sculpture for the 150th started out. So, it's for the year, celebrating the year, really, of our sesquicentennial, 150 years, 1861 to 2011. Now, the book was edited by Susan J. Banks, who's on the city staff and is here tonight, Susan El Kelsey, who is on the city staff and is here tonight, and myself. It was published by Gail McGrath and Associates, Performance Media, Northbrook. And the book is, is a product that's created by them. They do lots of, they do books like this for Ravinia, put together, Ravinia, the Lyric Opera, different things that have lots of information in them. So, they're used to doing this sort of thing. Now, it involves lots of people, and I don't think that's big enough to be able to read, but there are lots of people who were involved in making the process happen, from the 150th committee of the city, former mayors who led that and everyone else that was involved in, that funded part of the timeline project that went into doing this, the timeline project, and also, lots of different people who provided photographs, images, background material and things that were used in both the timeline and also in the book. The table of contents shows that it's divided up by decades. And so, for want of a better organizational thing, it goes through chronologically by decades, and then it tells about the people, people at Performance Media that were involved at the bottom. Now, this was made possible, it sells for $10. It's got over 200 pictures of Lake Forest in it. It's got more pictures than that, but some of them are of other things for context. But it's got two, over 200 Lake Forest pictures. This is an example of one of the advertisements for a not-for-profit, but it's Lake Forest Country Day School. It's got their own timeline, and it's got three pictures of theirs. So, it shows the quality of how the advertising really contributes to the quality of the book too. Now, it's a unique format, and I think it's perfectly logical that in an era when we have increasing online involvement, that this is a product that generated out of the historic timeline that was thought up about a couple of years ago by the historical committee of the 150th committee, subcommittee of the 150th committee. And they started gathering that with grants from the, from the 150th committee to have interns and also volunteers work on going through the Lake, the Lake Forest newspapers, especially for the last 50 years, to gather material and to put this into a timeline. And then, there also, it was a text developed based on that and on books that already exist, and people started scrummaging around trying to find good pictures. In this particular case, we see John Griffith, who was the real estate czar, really, who worked for, worked with Louis Swift, but basically sold all the estates 100 years ago and, and then subdivided them later. So, he was immensely important. And then there's Barra, which we're talking about, we just mentioned earlier tonight. This was this 150th committee historical project, and you can see the kinds of historical pictures. That's Melody Farm at the top, 1904 to 1910, and then the Church of the Holy Spirit, 1902 on Westminster Road, and then, again, a series of events under each year on the right. This, now, what I don't show is some of the global pages that they've gotten involved in providing for this, which is to give context, because it's hard to remember what things go with what. But this is like a Lake Forest page dealing with the Depression era, and the post office, of course, was created in one depression. We may lose it in another, but that's another subject. But you can see how the timeline and the photographs work together, and this is also supported by the global pages that the, that the publishers provided. Now, especially important is the last 50 years. Edward Arpey wrote a history in a very different era, talking to old timers that remembered back almost the whole hundred years of the first hundred years that ended in 1961. That book came out in 1964. It was his product alone, whereas this book is a much more collaborative effort of lots of people being involved. So, it's, it's a different kind of a thing. And this is also something that's not meant to be the ultimate history of these last 50 years, but it's the first pass. So, this timeline is to get us started. And what we hope is, people who buy the book will say, "Well, shoot, they left out my aunt Flora, and she did such and such on such and such a date," and they'll contact the Historical Society, send in information, so that that's available for whoever then ultimately does a bigger history of the, of the town at some point. So, we're trying to gather information about this last 50 years while there are people around who really know the story, just like we just read a few minutes ago, hearing about a, the chief of police who had started work as a patrolman in 1956. This is uniquely interactive, and so you can contact the society to add or to correct items online. They will do the online, they'll mediate to the online, but they'll try to be, so it'll be something that can continue. And this is really unique. I don't know of anybody who's actually tried to do this before. So, Lake Forest, once again, is doing something that's a little bit unusual, a little bit on its own. The pictures there are pretty familiar. Ragdale at the bottom, which as we know is going through a major, really rehabilitation and restoration this year, which is phenomenal for the city. And above is the, Crabtree Farm now, one of the oldest log cabin, log houses in Lake Forest that was rescued in 2005 and taken up there. And it's now in much more like the kind of prairie setting it would have been in originally. Another thing that's in here are two years of preservation award houses and projects that the publisher worked with the Preservation Foundation to show. And so, these are houses from different parts of town. The top one is on Awani Road, the other one is on Estate Lane at the bottom, and that's the award kind of medallion that they hand out every year. And so, there's descriptions of the kind of properties, and these preservation, adaptive reuse and rehabilitation of these kind of places show the local themes that really underscore the quality of our community and the pride that people take in it. The top place is one of the, is probably the last building left of Cyrus McCormick's Walden Estate. This was a kind of workshops that he had, and they've been adaptively reused into a residence in recent years. Next is a house on Stone Gate Road in the middle that was completely rehabbed recently, an 1896 house. And then a gate, just a gate was redone for the Carol's Place on Mayflower Road, and so we gave them a grant for the landscape work of restoring that gate entry, making it large enough so trucks can get through without banging the light off. We also record the celebration year in the timeline and in images. So, you can see that right in this court, right in this room, the council chambers a year ago, in February, there was the reenactment of the first, the setting up of the city in 1861, and so, and different things that went on during the year. And then from Lake Forest Day to band concerts to breaks at the beach, this last year's been recorded in the book also. Along with the references and in the text and also in the timeline that tell you where these things came from, there is, there are listings of the sources of where these things came from, acknowledgements, bibliography, lists of websites that were used, and also lists of all the people who contributed pictures, to acknowledge them but also to provide source information for the future. And finally, if you're looking for somebody, there's a five column, one, two, three, four, five, column index, and you can, you can search it to see where individuals are mentioned inside the text. Everybody in Lake Forest can't be mentioned, obviously, but a number of people do get picked up, and so if you're hunting for them, you can find them there. The back cover has, emphasizes, again, our uniqueness as a community and notability as a community. The innovative 1860, 1857's curvilinear street plan, the first on a scale, first town plan like that on its scale since the Middle Ages, really, and the way it's integrated with the schools that were in the east side, and then how this basically inspired the entire community and how it grew. So, how is this interactive, again? So, you can buy, and you can read it, and you can contribute to the online timeline at the Historical Society. Janice Hack is the executive director, Lori Stein, the excellent collections manager, who worked and supervised the project of putting together the timeline. The book is available for purchase at the Lake Forest Bookstore and at Heelander's for $10, thanks to the generosity of the advertisers, more than 30 of them with full-page ads, I think. And by mail, if you don't want to go to the stores, you can get it by, for $15 from Performance Media itself. And then you can also work with that timeline, as I mentioned, and there's a website that you can get, and that website is also in the book, if you get the book, but www.lflbhistory.org for the Historical Society. You can contact them, see the timeline there. And then if you have corrections to the book text itself, and to see more information, you can go to a site at the Lake Forest College Archives where I'm gathering some of that information as it comes in. So, I think that this is sort of an exciting adventure in that it introduces, it spreads out to the whole community, the chance to be part of continually building the process of having historical information in the community. Lots of efforts as a legacy project for organizational history that the Historical Society and the 150th Committee undertook this last year, and this is one more part of that. And I think, once again, Lake Forest is breaking into new ground when it does its history in this way. So, I hope you'll all enjoy taking a look at this book, seeing the 200 pictures that are local historical ones, and that you'll comment and participate to the extent to which it seems to fit into your timeline. So, thank you very much for the opportunity to bring this up.
Great. Thanks very much, Art. And thank you to you for your work on this, as well as Susan Banks and Susan Kelsey. Looks like a terrific publication and needs to be in every Lake Forest home. Next item on the agenda, comments by city manager. Bob's not here this evening?
None this evening.
Not, not this evening for you either. Okay. Next item on the agenda, council committee reports. Under property and public lands, Mary Van Arstil and a couple of her staff members came in in the December meeting to give the committee an update on the park use policies and fiscal year 13 park fees. And Mary's here tonight to give us a summary on some of those items. Mary?
Good evening, members of city council. Thank you for allowing me to be here tonight. As introduced, we do have the park use policies in your packet this evening. And just a little background on it, we have had the park use regulations, as they've been called in the past for many, many years. This isn't a new document. However, because they do incorporate a variety of regulations and policies, as well as the fact that they are annual fees that we set, it was recommended by the city attorney that we retitle them to policies and bring them through the park board, which has always happened in the past, but also to city council. And because it was new, though, to city council, we did also take it before the Property and Public Land Committee on December 15th, and they had a chance to see these documents as well. Our park use policies incorporate three different policies. First one is our pavilion rental policy, and that policy allows our residents and business companies located in Lake Forest to rent the park and beach pavilions, and really allows for those kind of small family gatherings or, you know, neighborhood events, that kind of thing to occur at the, at the park pavilions or down at the beach. And it's really designed, you know, to keep the park open during the normal public use. We aren't closing the park for public use, but they're allowed to use these pavilions and have the pavilion set aside for their event. If it was a much larger scale event like, that would involve a variety of city services, whether that's police or fire, you know, street closures, and that has to go through our special event policy, which is managed by the city hall. So, that's different than the pavilion rental policy that were included in your packet tonight. The second policy was our athletic league user fee, and basically, this policy is, allows Lake Forest-based sport organizations to rent the athletic fields owned by the city for their various league schedules. And, you know, we've, we're closely with the rec department as well as the park board to kind of look at this, because it's an important policy, helps us offset costs of having outside organizations utilize the properties. We do support them, whether with lining the fields or doing different, moving goals out for them and anchoring them and that kind of thing. There's costs associated for the city. So, this athletic league user policy helps us recoup those kinds of costs, but yet support all of those important organizations in town that deliver recreation services from an athletic nature for the community. And then the last content that was in the policy is the movable goal safety policy, which was what it used to be called. And basically, it was, we've always had a movable soccer goal policy where we were anchoring our soccer goals. We've been doing that for a number of years. However, in this past year, the governor Quinn, in August, enacted a new law called Zack's Law, and basically, that added the component of, not only do you need to make sure that you anchor properly all your goals and have them labeled, that they are a safety hazard, but that you need to also include an educational component for the community. All users that use our fields need to comply with this educational component, and that, you know, we, we have a mandate upon us to make sure that any groups that are using our fields are aware of it and follow those policies and procedures. So, really, those are the three main policies that are incorporated into tonight's request. The changes were very minor that we were implementing or suggesting, but first was that we were not recommending any fee increases for our policies, with the exception of one, which I'll get to in just a second. But primarily, because we are recouping all of our costs that's related to delivering these services for the community, in particular with the athletic field use policy, we didn't feel it was a good timing to try to add any cost to that, because in addition to recouping our costs, we also implemented a year ago the Sport Field Improvement Fund policy, which allows us to basically, each organization's contributing money back into a capital fund to help us improve our fields and stuff from a capital perspective. So, that's, that's a separate thing. And that new fee just started this last year, and they've been adding, you know, money into that, and we've accumulated around $60,000, which has allowed us to begin to address a lot of our field improvement needs. That's been done from a capital side. So, that was one reason for no fee increases. The second, though, was we did have, we did want to align some of our minor fees that we do with our special event policy administered by city hall, and that was, the one area we were in different prices was just the grills, use of grills. And when we say grills, we're talking the large, these are large grills that take a special crew to bring them out, so you can cook for a large number of people. So, there's directly, you know, it's, it's a unique cost that, and time element that, in order to get these grills out to groups. But other than that, we were recommending leaving our other fees in line with that. And then, of course, the last thing was just really the renaming of our movable soccer goal to the soccer goal safety and education policy, and putting that in place with all of our organizations in town, and making sure that this next year they'll comply with, making sure that their participants are aware of the safety hazards associated with it. So, that's the overview of it. Is there any questions I can answer for you on any aspects of it?
Any questions for Mary?
No, I thought it was great, Mary. I, I had a, just in the future, I had a hard time reading through the documents and not knowing what got changed. You said the documents were existing policies, and they didn't have like a red line, that would be helpful.
Yeah, we, we did lay them out recently, but we corrected some language. We had to do some updates, and so we, it was a lot of just kind of minutia. It wasn't content substantive, just that, yeah.
Just for the future.
Yeah, no, I thought it was great, the minor changes in the, keeping the fees consistent, I'm sure is appreciated by everyone. Having set out a policy and noting, to my amazement, that you can't get married in a park in Lake Forest, I thought was very interesting. But it's a great starting point, and it'll be revisited from year to year.
Yes.
Yeah, that's, thank you.
We'll bring it through annually for you. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary.
And I'd like to move for approval the resolution to the park use policies and the fiscal year 2013 park fees.
Give a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, we need a roll call vote, don't we?
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Pandeleon?
Aye.
Alderman Morse?
Aye.
Alderman Schoenheider?
Aye.
Alderman Edelman?
Aye.
Five A's, no A's, motion carries.
Thanks, Bertie. Next item on the agenda, comments by council members? Any? Why don't I, I was looking at you. The next item, opportunity for the public to address the city council tonight on non-agenda items. Anyone in the audience? Yes, come on up. State your name and your address, please.
My name is Nancy Voorhees, and I live at 475 West Deerpath, and have lived there for quite some time. My husband is Brad Cundy, and we both have become a little bit more concerned about a problem, we think is a problem, in Lake Forest. I've lived here for 15 years. Before that, I lived in Lake Bluff for 10 years. And so, I say this to just provide a little bit of context for the issue that I'd like to raise. And more specifically, I've seen and lived in this environment for 25 years, and I think that it's fair to say that the coyote population has definitely increased in this time period and is very visible. I don't know what, if anything, our city has done to date to study this issue or provide a strategic plan for management, but I think it might be time to put it on the front burner, if that hasn't happened already. We personally have had four encounters with coyotes, and I hear from residents all the time that this is happening to them as well. I'd like to just tell you about our encounters, and I think that they probably are similar to other people's. The first occurred last summer, when at 6:30, we were out in our backyard, just having an iced tea, and it was still sort of daylight out. Our English setter was sitting in the yard, and a great big coyote walked out of the trees and sat right down on the grass in front of our dog. We were all just transfixed. And of course, we yelled and screamed, and the coyote went away, and that was that. It took off. But we were pretty amazed at its boldness and that it wasn't dark outside. Then one morning this fall, we stood at the front door, and we watched in amazement out of, of the window in the front door. We watched two coyotes come up the entire length of the driveway, on the side of the driveway, it's a long driveway, and proceed through the property and course around through the backyard. And we do have an electric fence, and our dog is out, and it's very well-trained, but we are now afraid to let the dog out, even with the electric fence. Frankly, these two coyotes, I think, are pretty regular visitors. We've seen them even more since the winter has come upon us, and you can see their tracks all the time. The third occasion also happened in the fall when we took our dog for a walk in an area where dogs are okay to be off the leash, and to our surprise, a coyote popped up out of the woods, faced off with our dog, and acted like it was being very friendly. I mean, it lifted its tail, and it bowed its head, and it was kind of popping around. We think it was trying to engage the dog in playful behavior, and that's certainly how our dog took it. And before we knew it, the coyote had our dog chasing it, way far away from us. And my husband yelled and screamed and was calling our dog to come back, and finally and reluctantly, she did, but we were pretty shocked. A week later, I was at our vet, and I was communicating the story to him, and he said that he had just had a dog in there with major significant injuries from a coyote attack in Middle Fork Farms. So, you know, it's, it's a bit concerning. In fact, what he indicated happened in Middle Fork Farms was that the dog, it was off the leash, this wasn't our dog, and it followed a coyote, and he was running, the owner was running and chasing the two of them to the tree line, where they then were facing eight coyotes. And so, this pack behavior seems to be a phenomenon. I know, I've been doing some research, and at least 50 of them run, 50% of them run in packs. So, it's concerning, and this vet, who does live in Lake Forest, I, I think it's fair to say, feels that this is an increasing problem. And finally, in terms of personal experience, just last week, in the middle of the night, now I live on Deerpath, it's near the biker trail and all that, I awoke to a noise in the backyard. We have a big backyard, but it was definitely in our property. Several coyotes were attacking and feeding on something, and it was truly gross. It was very upsetting. I felt like I wanted to go get sick. And, you know, listening to these desperate squeals of whatever it had, I mean, it's like right in our backyard happening. I've taken a look at some of the scholarly research and articles that exist via the internet that deal with the issue of coyotes increasing encroachment into the urban scene, and what the potential management issues might be. And I have provided a brief summary of, like, hyperlinks for you to leave with you, so that you can do your own research and do a little reading. But I'd like to recap some interesting points that were made, and these are by the scholar- But I'd like to recap some interesting points that were made, and these are by the scholars and the expert consultants in the area. So as I tell you these things, these aren't my opinions. This is like key summary points from the people that know out there. The first is that to start with, the scholarly opinion is that the coyote population in urban areas is in fact increasing, and in fact, 50% of the coyotes are traveling in packs. I think if any of you live anywhere near Onwensia in the summer, I mean, it's amazing how many coyotes you hear. I don't know how they deal with it during the day, but... Secondly, coyotes are considered to be extremely adaptable, and they have thus learned how to completely exploit their landscape. The human environment is considered to be ideal for them because food is easier to come by, and they prefer easily obtainable food as, as opposed to rats and rabbits, which they have to chase and hunt, and it expend a lot of energy. Another point that's made is that, another reason that the human environment is ideal for them is because they generally go unopposed. And where coyotes go unopposed, they become bolder and bolder and bolder. According to experts who've studied this, most people in urban areas just don't know what to do when they face off with a coyote, and that seems fairly reasonable. So what do they do? They run inside and do nothing. And additionally, people's concerns for wildlife in general, and I'm one of those people too, cause them to be pretty passive about finding some kind of resolution to this problem. And the result is, as mentioned earlier, that, that coyotes are unopposed, and they become bolder and bolder and more assertive. Homeowners have reported, and this isn't, this is from the literature, so this is probably Los Angeles and Phoenix, but it would certainly apply here. I've actually heard a few of these things from residents in this community. Homeowners have reported incidents such as coyotes staring through the front windows of their homes with their yellow eyes fixated on their dog or their cat, coyotes routinely sleeping in the outdoor lawn furniture, coyotes snatching a dog right off a leash, right off while the owner is there, or chasing a pet through a doggy door into the house, coyotes growling at children in their backyard, coyotes carrying fresh-killed anythings like cats down the street, a coyote feeding in the street on a poodle within full view of passing motorists, active dens on freeways, properties that are nearby. And finally, and this is a point that some people might take issue with, and again, I am just referencing the scholars, aggressive behavior towards humans. There was a study of our national parks done, and the experts concluded that coyotes have lost their fear of humans, and they have come to regard small children as prey. Attacks on humans, which were once thought to be rare, have increased in frequency. And finally, researchers suggested that the motive for attacks by coyotes on humans is not always hunger. Movement, and particularly escape behavior, is considered to be a key stimulus for attack. In their opinion, and this is again consultants and researchers, children's play and running behavior, particularly when running away from a coyote, may provide a real strong motive for attack. There are a lot of scholarly articles on the internet, and again, I'd like to leave you with these packets so you can do some reading yourself. But I think it seems reasonable to, to suggest that some sort of attention maybe should be brought to bear on this issue as it pertains to Lake Forest. And more specifically, I mean, there are consultants out there, I don't know who they are, but who have dealt with this problem in LA and in Phoenix. Maybe we should direct some of our fiscal resources to having someone come in and, and give us an opinion. And secondly, an idea was that the public could probably all benefit from an educational program that teaches us what we should or should not do in the face of coyote behavior because we don't know. And, you know, it would be very likely that someone would run from a coyote, and that might just, you know, provide attack motive. So I'm hopeful that the board will consider investing some resources and thought and thinking in this direction. I'm concerned that it's only a matter of time before an incident happens that would be very regrettable.
Thank you very much.
Is anything happening so far in terms of this issue?
I don't know if there's been anything internally, but we'll certainly look at your information. Thank you, you're bringing up some valid points. I know we live near Conway Farms, and, you know, we hear the screaming at night and, and see coyotes running on the path and, and various places around the golf course. So it's a valid concern.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda tonight. On the consent agenda, we have one item, the approval of the minutes from the January 3rd, 2012 city council meeting. Any changes, additions, corrections to those minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Consent, consent agenda is approved. Next item, again, is just a reinforcement, again, the, the Bear Woodlands ordinance will not be on the agenda tonight. It will be moved to February 6th. So if you happen to be watching at home, we've made a decision that because of the small amount of council members and, and the mayor not being here tonight, it was important to have the full body here as well as an opportunity to really fine-tune the language in the ordinance. So if you happen to be watching tonight on, on television, just be aware it will be February 6th from where it will be on the agenda. The next item under ordinances, consideration of an ordinance amending Chapter 36 of the City of Lake Forest Code regarding political campaign and political message signs. First reading and if desired by the council, a final approval. Kathy Cerniak made a presentation this evening to the finance committee prior to the council meeting about this topic, and we got some input from city corporation council Vic Filippini about some legislative changes that have also driven some of these modifications. Anyone on the council have any further questions of Vic or of Kathy about this?
No, I think it's safe to say that it's basically language changes to conform with the state legis, new state legislation. So people who want signs up can keep doing that according to the policies that we've had in place for some time.
Anyone else?
No.
Okay, I think we need to waive first reading of the ordinance. I think we can do that by voice vote. All those in favor of waving first reading?
I'll move to waive first reading.
Second.
All in, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
None.
It's that first reading thing that just threw me off. And then, we need a motion to approve the ordinance.
Motion to approve the ordinance?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman Pandalian.
Aye.
Alderman Morse.
Aye.
Alderman Schoenheider.
Aye.
Alderman Edelman.
Aye.
Five A's, no N's, motion carries.
Thank you, Bertie, very much. Under the next category, new business authorization, enter into a Phase 1 preliminary engineering agreement with IDOT and HW Lochner for the Lake Woodbine Bridge Rehabilitation Project. Again, we were, had plenty of time tonight at the finance committee meeting, so we did have Ramish make a presentation on this particular topic. The city is planning on moving ahead with the preliminary engineering work on this bridge, and will be funded 80% by an IDOT grant, and with a 20% matching dollars through the city. So the idea is, the city will have to go ahead and start the work, incur the cost, and then recover through, through the grant process. The hope is to get that started in the spring, and, and again, wrap it up and receive the 80% recovery from the state. Any questions, comments, further clarification needed by Ramish or anyone else?
No, I thought we covered that earlier.
Okay. Need a motion to approve that authorization?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Aye.
Roll call vote, Bertie.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman Pandalian.
Aye.
Alderman Morse.
Aye.
Alderman Schoenheider.
Aye.
Alderman Edelman.
Aye.
Five A's, no N's, motion carries.
Thank you very much. And the last item under new business is consideration of a recommendation to approve a lease assumption from Lake Forest Bank and Trust to Northern Trust for the space at the West Lake Forest Train Station. Karina, update is tonight at the finance committee about Lake Forest Bank and Trust purchasing the former Northern Trust facility on Waukegan Road. And Lake Forest Bank and Northern Trust have entered into an understanding that the Northern would then assume the lease that the city has at the train station for the banking facilities that they have currently there under the Lake Forest Bank and Trust name. Karina, anything else? Any further comment?
No, unless you have questions.
Okay, any questions? We did learn tonight from Karina that it will be an assumption of that lease, and that lease does come up in September, and we've had discussions, ongoing discussions already with the Northern about a potential extension of that lease.
Correct.
Okay, great.
Okay, and move to approve the lease assumption is proposed?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman Pandalian.
Aye.
Alderman Morse.
Aye.
Alderman Schoenheider.
Aye.
Alderman Edelman.
Aye.
Five A's, no N's, motion carries.
Thank you, Bertie, very much. Additional items for council discussion?
Nope.
Anyone? Mike?
You know, Nancy Voorhees brought up, I think, a valid issue about the coyotes. In fact, I called and filed a police report last winter because we were letting my son out to the bus, and right in front of our front door was a blood-curdling, frozen pool of blood. And the police officer showed up, and we investigated it because I didn't know what the heck happened that previous night. And we deduced that it was a coyote who ran down a rabbit all the way to within two feet of my front door. It is only a matter of time possibly before a tragedy occurs if they're getting that bold. And I've got friends who get dogs. I encourage them not to do the wireless or invisible fence because it keeps their dog in the backyard, and yet the coyotes can come in and get them. And the one scenario that she described about the coyote engaging her dog in play, you can be sure there was a pack in the woods waiting for him to be distanced enough from the owners. So since Chief Berger's in the audience, if maybe he could take a couple minutes and just tell us to what extent is it an issue in our community, I would be interested to hear.
And to fill time a little bit, just curiosity, it just so happens about a week ago, college and Washington streets in Lake Forest, coming home from another night of paddle tennis, and probably assuming I was hallucinating, there was a coyote kind of lazily walking down the road, flashed my brights, and it just didn't feel like moving. It was just kind of holding up traffic.
If that was a paddle night, you might have been hallucinating.
Yeah, I possibly was. It could be any night. But no, I think there is a need for an educational program just on how to deal with these animals, be it like deer that'll come on roadways. We intersect with wild animals, wildlife, and reaction certainly is appreciated. Anyways, I filled enough time.
Chief? We've, Alderman, we've never done an educational piece about how to deal with a coyote if you encounter a coyote, so we could come up with an educational piece. In answer to your question, how many cases do we get? I don't know off the top of my head. I can look it up and get you that information tomorrow. But I would say maybe two every six months would be a good average.
What, what would a case be?
Kind of like Alderman Edelman's, Alderman Pandalian. Some were a resident calls, and we send an officer or the CSO out to investigate or something like that.
Okay. So somebody reaches a point where they call the police and want somebody to come over and look at what's going on?
That's correct.
Because I think, I certainly have also had encounters. I mean, we, Christmas morning a couple of years ago, we were sitting around the Christmas tree, and our dog went to the window wagging her tail as if to go out and play, and there was a big old maimed coyote male standing right in the middle of our backyard staring at us opening Christmas presents.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, so it's, I don't know that there's a neighborhood in town that you wouldn't find somebody...
Hasn't seen a coyote, right?
Yeah. I'd be concerned about the children, about the welfare of the little kids.
You know, I've, I have meetings with other chiefs along the North Shore, and we don't have, even with talking to them, we haven't had any encounters with coyotes and children like you're speaking of, at least not up to this point, at least the five years that I've been chief, so.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
No. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Sean.
Thank you, Mayor, for today, good evening.